I would now announce honorable Sabrina Johnson is gonna do this swearing in.
You're going to start with mayor of the office. Raise your hand on the right and please raise your right hand. Thank you, very good. I insert your name.
I Byron Nolan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
For the City of Inglewood.
For the City of Inglewood.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Alright, we're going to go with our councilors. I think I should do these individual counts. I'm going to call up Felicia Rutledge Cheeseburger.
Yep, my dad and my husband.
Come on up, dad and husband.
Keisha, uh...
I insert your name.
Felicia Rutledge.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District One.
For District One.
For the City of Inglewood.
For the City of Inglewood.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Councilman Bishop.
I insert your name.
I Freddie Bishop.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter for the City of Inglewood.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District Two.
For District Two.
For the City of Inglewood according to the best of my ability.
For the City of Inglewood according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Councilwoman Scott.
My mom and my dad.
Coming up, parents. I insert your name.
Hi, Lindsay Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of city council member.
The duties of the city council member.
For District Three.
For District Three.
For the City of Inglewood.
For the City of Inglewood.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I know we had a family emergency, so I'm not sure if a lot of my family is here. If you are here, will you please join me? Carolyn Slatch, the birth giver, come on. And Sandra Watley and Pastor Tyler, can you join me too, please?
Certainly, I'd be proud.
I insert your name.
I Stephen Andre Chisholm.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter for the City of Inglewood.
And the Charter for the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District Four.
For District Four.
For the City of Inglewood.
For the City of Inglewood.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Councilwoman Howard, would you join? I insert your name.
I can't.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Inglewood.
Charter of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of city council member for District Five. For the City of Inglewood. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I would like my family.
Come on up, family.
Family. Don't be shy.
I insert your name.
I G R Chris Coleman Richardson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will...
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter for the City of Inglewood.
And the Charter for the City of Inglewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the city...
The duties.
The duties of the council of Inglewood.
For District Six.
For District Six.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations, everyone. I wish you the best.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Judge Johnson again. This is her day off. But see, he made sure we asked one thing. Now, at orientation meeting, we're gonna change up the process a little bit. We wanna always, well, I always wanna give the city, the members of the residents an opportunity to speak on items that's on the agenda. So we'll go through the new business. If anybody has any comments, anything they want to say regarding the things that are on the agenda, you're welcome to come up, or we'll ring the microphone to you, so you can make your comments. The thought is, I would like to hear from you before we vote on different things, so we'll know what you want us to do, or how you feel about particular matter. So I don't know if everybody got a copy of the agenda?
No.
Uh-oh. So we won't have a lot of comments tonight. Okay, we'll go through real quick. We're gonna have a presentation at the seven o'clock meeting when it starts from the Police Department. Then we'll do approve the gen... I'm sorry, approve the agenda, then after presentation. There's no public hearings tonight. Then we'll go over and approve the consent agenda, which is just the minutes from the October 16th, 2023 meeting, and we have approval of our City Attorney's Bill for August 2023. Then we go to the boards and commissions. I don't know if we have any appointments tonight, but at that time, we can appoint if we have anybody to appoint. I would like to encourage anyone who wants to sit on a board or commission, because we're looking for volunteers. We have a lot of openings on very important boards and commissions. But we just want you to stop in the clerk's office and fill out the application. It's one pager, it's real simple. Just put down your name, your address, the board commission you're interested in, and I think a little bit about what experience you have. And so when we present it to the city council, we'll know, have a little information about you, because we wanna definitely start making some appointments, if not tonight, then at the next meeting in December. Okay. Ordinance, previous business, I don't think we have any. Ordinance, new business. Item A, discussion, action, consider approving the attached budget amendments for the water and sewer farm. For the benefit of all of us who are new, except for Councilman Chisholm and Councilwoman Howard, I'm gonna have Jerome Rivers come speak to this budget amendment, so we'll know what we're voting on tonight. If we have any questions, we can ask those now. And then also, people from the audience can also ask questions of their colleagues after he finishes. Director Rivers.
Good evening.
Audio, audio, audio.
Good evening. So to Mayor Castle, my request today is for Jeff Field and equipment. We have some issues going on. We have some issues going on at the police station, Justice Center, and we have some issues going on at City Hall that I'd rather not speak upon right now, but I need this money to correct those issues. But that's why you have a budget, man, before you bought equipment maintenance and building, right? Issues in both of those bills. So if you have any questions, I can't speak to the nature of what money's for. Well, that money would, that money would take me out to June. This amendment would take me out to the end of the year.
It was in the packet from last meeting. They take, they just moved everything from the last meeting over to our meeting. So unfortunately, we didn't get a packet for this meeting, because some employees had some private issues, family issues, so we didn't get a packet for this meeting. It's in last meeting's packet. That was, that should've been forwarded to...
Yes.
It's live, it's live. Given that we didn't get the information, there's some hiccups in the transition. Okay, we'll table it to the next meeting, so all the council members can get the information. And then, I guess we already made comments, since we don't have information. The second item, item B on the new business, is consider approving a business item, a moratorium on issuing any medical or recreational licenses for dispensaries or retail stores for one year. Let me explain, the reason for this is, and we can't talk about the details of it, but on November 8th, day after the election, we received two civil lawsuits involving marijuana. So we also earlier this year, the city council capped the number at eight. Right now, we're at seven. We have two being built, ones are already built, ready to go, and now we receive these two lawsuits. So for the sake of the city council, get up to speed on these issues. We're gonna talk about some of them in closed session today with our city attorney. I want everybody, I want us to all get a grip on what's happening here, what we need to do, before people come back to us and ask for licenses, because we're gonna have some problems, no matter what we do. But I want us to all be informed when we make our decisions. So even though we don't intend to have a moratorium for a year, we typically put a date on it, you have to put an end date on it, so we're gonna say a year. But hopefully, these lawsuits and everything will be resolved prior to that, and we can move forward with the business of the city. So that's the reasoning behind it. If anybody would like to make any comments, you're welcome to do so. Do we have another microphone we could take out? Does anybody have any questions? I'll do my best to explain it, but we're all getting information. I haven't even looked at the files yet. We, some employees were missing the day from work, so we weren't able to get the files to go through them piece by piece, but I will do that hopefully tomorrow. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? Okay, we'll move on to item C. We're adding item C to the agenda that's not there currently, but we have to elect a mayor pro temp tonight. So that's the first thing we have to do when a new council is selected. We have to decide who the mayor pro temp will be, and that's purely by vote. So the members on the city council get the vote. If there happens to be a tie, then I get a vote. If, if it's not a tie, I get, I don't get a vote. So we're gonna decide that tonight. Does anybody have any comments, questions regarding that item?
Yes.
Yes.
Cool. Do we have a microphone, or we can give, hardy round?
There's always been a top vote getter in the pro temp.
You know, that's, I know exactly what you're saying. That's, that's, that's what I was told when I was elected years ago, but actually, the charter says that they have to be elected by the city council members. I thought it was a top voter, too, but...
It's been like that for the last twenty years.
No, no, it's, if you... I know. If you, if you read it, we changed the charter, you might be right when you say that first. We changed the charter in 2016, and when the charter was changed, it changed into a pure election, not the top vote winner, because people had objections to that, because some people were running unopposed, you know, and just not in addition, we had all write-ins, and their numbers are affected, because they get less numbers. So they changed that to be just a vote.
Okay, let's go on past practice. The last election, they won the top vote.
They did, they did.
Every last election with the new charter.
I watched the, I watched the first meeting last night, I was here, actually, and they actually voted, so I was here. And they voted, because they voted a couple, voted one time, because there was a tie, and some people had to change votes in order to elect the mayor pro temp.
Well, it's been a tradition, why are you changing it now?
I'm not changing anything. The charter was changed in 2016, we had a charter mission.
I think 2016, we in 2023, they still been doing the same tradition as we got the most votes, they may, they get more, they change it now.
Okay.
They follow the charter of the West, that's why they following now.
Hold on, I wasn't in charge last election. The last election was 2019, and they did vote on a mayor pro temp, all right, I don't have to mean, because 2015...
How about you, again, sir?
Huh?
How about you, again, for us, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, somebody started talking.
I don't say, all right, but I'm, they, they recognize me.
That's fine, you're recognized.
I was saying, sir.
Okay.
That as they both said, you know, that by, by history, by the, the progress that been going on, if the progress that, that Harry D. said, it has been the person with the most elected, both, both votes at the, at the end of the election. We have our present mayor pro temp, who's Kim Howard, who has been our mayor pro temp, and I don't see any reason or any change it now, and when it comes to what you said, what the people want, okay? What the people want, we want to change, and we have to change. Our appreciation's topic of marijuana, but this right here, changing the whole process of the Inglewood, of the Inglewood, of the tradition.
Again, I, I respect, I respect what you're saying, I thought the same thing you did until I got elected in 2015. Let me go back.
2015, when you were elected.
Well, 2015, when I was elected, we, we elected the mayor pro temp.
And we went with the person who had the most votes.
No, 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 we elected, they may have chose the person with the most votes, but everybody has a vote. He was, we took a vote, and Tim Williams was elected mayor pro temp. Is Tim Williams here?
As I was saying, point of order, point of order, point of order, please.
You're gonna get a point of order, you're not an elected official.
Charter, does think that. Change that.
Look, if someone, I have a charter right here. Somebody wants to show me the charter.
Say what I'm saying, okay?
Excuse me. My understanding, and I, I've read it, helped write it, the charter says it's elect, it's an elected position.
Yeah, we understand that.
That's all I'm saying.
It's not a discussion, it was a statement that I was trying to make, probably a rule here, I interrupted.
Okay.
Okay, now, it's a very tragic situation what we're dealing with here, and as you said, you're gonna make a change, you make change, but don't make changes, okay? And I totally support everyone having a vote. The very competent mayor pro temp that has been there for the last eight years, and I, I don't believe it, wish to have the law changed in that right now, that's all.
I'm sorry. Former Councilman Tim Williams, help me out. I remember when I was mayor, you were the mayor pro temp. Did we not vote on you becoming the mayor pro temp?
He had to vote votes.
Yes.
I think he did have to vote votes, but did, but did we not vote you in?
Yes.
Oh, he had to vote votes.
I'm sorry.
I was...
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Ms. Anderson.
Legal by guys, now she looking at particular item and say, this is hot, it should've been, even though it wasn't done that way, it should've been, now it's starting to get to a hot point, so we're like, pop.
That's right.
I support that a hundred percent. Look, we're going to, we're, we're thinking about putting some amendments to the charter on the ballot this year. So if the public want anything changed, we can do two to three amendments without hiring or creating a charter commission. So if we wanna just change the charter slightly to approve it, and if that's one of the improvements, I have no problem with putting that on the ballot and asking people what they want to do. It could be the highest vote, vote getter, or it could be by election, whatever the residents want to do. So that's something we can consider putting on the ballot for this year.
Amendment, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, the method changes in the constitution, it is good, amendments are good.
Yeah, yeah.
And don't equate it, it's supposed to be got this, correct, yeah? But...
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. It's section 6.2, Election of Mayor Pro Temp, and it says, "The city council shall at its first meeting following each regular city election, elect one of its members to serve as mayor pro temp for a term expiring at the first council meeting following the next regular city election." But that's what it said. Huh? But that's what we have to do now, we have to follow the charter. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your comment, by the way. Okay, that's the last business item we have on the agenda, so it won't be a terribly long meeting. We have public participation, where the public can speak for up to three minutes, I hope somebody bought a time. So anything you wanna say in public participation, you're welcome to do so, and we will listen to everybody, that's how we do. And then at the end of the meeting, mayor and council will have their communications, where they can say whatever they'd like to say about the meeting, or anything. This is their opportunity to talk directly to you, and then we'll close out the meeting. So the regular meeting will start at seven o'clock. I know we have some closed session items we need to talk about, so we're gonna go in the closed session, you're welcome to stay. We'll be back promptly at seven o'clock to start the actual meeting. We have those three items that are gonna be on the agenda and our presentation. So I wanna thank everybody for coming, and hopefully you'll stay for the seven o'clock meeting. Yeah, we need a motion to go to closed session.
Motion to go into closed session for...
It's been properly, litigation?
For Flower Bowl II and Pure Properties LLC. Flower Bowl II and Pure Properties LLC.
It's been properly moved and set, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote, okay. Councilman Bishop. Here.
Say here.
Here, okay. Okay. Council, Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watkins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Howard, okay, thank you. It passes six to nothing. Okay, everybody, we'll be back. It's called to order. We're gonna have Pastor Leon Crawford say a prayer for us tonight.
Amen. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to you and we say thank you. Thank you for being the God of this universe, the God of our great nation, the God of this providence, and the God of our great city, the City of Inglewood. We ask for your blessings to be upon our mayor, our city council, and that the wisdom flow from our leaders, all of our senior officials, your hand may be upon them. Father, bless this meeting, that wisdom flow, and Jesus may be praised.
Amen, brother. Everybody, please stand for blessing be.
I bless the nations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great Father, who whispers, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cliff, roll call, please.
Mayor Byron H. Nolan.
Present.
Councilperson Felisa, Felicia Rutledge.
Present.
Councilperson Freddie George Bishop III.
Present.
Councilperson Lindsay Scott.
Present.
Councilperson Stephen Chisholm.
Present.
Councilperson Kim Howard.
Here.
And Councilperson Dee Coleman Richardson.
Thank you. We have a call. Now, approve of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda, striking item A, and the other two items be moved up to become items A and B? We talked about it during orientation, we're gonna table that matter until the next meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved, you say? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yep? It passes. Okay, we have a presentation tonight. We have Police Chief Bill Radler, who's gonna lead the first. Thank you, Mayor. Council, congratulations, everyone. Honorable body and to the citizens. Tonight, we are honoring just several officers and employees of the Inglewood Police Department that have gone above and beyond and shown some exemplary work in the last few months, and we thought it was very important to recognize them for something that they did that was truly touching, not just... to recognize them for something that they did that was truly, uh, touching, not just, above and beyond, but it was really, really unbelievable, and I just wanted to recognize them, uh, with their certificates. Presenting an Easther Police Department Community Service Award to auxiliary officer Hussein Hashem. On November seventh, twenty twenty-three, you assisted a homeless family by providing shelter. The Easther Police Department is fortunate to have officers with your work ethic, dedication, and values. It takes all of us, Hussein Hashem.
Good job.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
For those of you that don't know, this is the Assistant Chief of Police, Tamika Jenkins, please. Lady, lady on my head and not my heart, you have to back. Um, I'll hear about it later. Presenting an Easther Police Department Community Service Award to auxiliary officer Lamont Patton. On November seventh, twenty twenty-three, you assisted the same homeless family with shelter from the cold. The Easther Police Department is fortunate to have officers with your work ethic, dedication, and values. It takes all of us. Thank you. Well, well, well. This Easther Police Department Community Service Award goes to Officer Tavon Hall. Easther Police Department would like to give the team player award to student police officer Jared Monroe. The Easther Police Department is fortunate to have employees with your work ethic, dedication, and values. Your can-do attitude really embodies our organizational values. It takes all of us. Student police officer Monroe is slated to start the academy in January. So I wanna just say a few words about the, uh, other officers. In fact, I'm gonna have the Assistant Chief talk about what those officers did for a family, uh, inside the city of Easther, uh, that were outside and, and homeless, and, uh, I just wanna give you a second to talk a little bit about what those officers did.
So like, like Chief mentioned earlier, we had a, we got a call for service, um, at a residence stating that there was some people trying to start a fire. Um, our officers arrived on the location, um, upon talking to that family and doing further investigation, they realized that it was a nine, ten, thirteen, and then an adult male. What they were doing was, they were starting a fire because they were cold. Okay, so they were trying to stay warm. So these officers took it upon themselves to pay for that family to stay in a hotel for two weeks out of their. These are the type of things that we strive for within our agency. And just for them to take it upon themselves and to take money out of their pockets, some of them don't even get paid to be here, they're auxiliary officers. So they took money out of their homes to make sure that this family stayed warm. Um, and let me go back and say that the, it was, um, three males, am I correct? And then the adult male, the stepfather. The mom is in a hospital battling cancer. Okay? So the stepdad is taking care of this family, he's doing the best that he can, and we have been in constant communication and contact with them to make sure that they continuously have shelter and have a roof over their heads. Thank you, guys, for all the power, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. And that is the point of our slogan, it takes all of us. And it really does.
Yeah.
Like to thank mayor and council for this opportunity and thank those officers. Thank you so much for. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three regular city council council meeting minutes?
Okay. Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, den. It passes. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, the bill from SNEC and?
How do we pronounce this?
Oh, we're good, okay. Do we have any more appointments? Board of commission appointments? Remember, if you're interested in that, please fill out an application at the city clerk's office. Okay, previous business, we have none. Ordances, we have none. New business, item A.
I made discussion action for council, consider approving a business item moratorium on issuing any medical or recreational licenses for dispensaries or retail stores.
It's been moved?
Second.
Been properly seconded, discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, den. It passes. Okay, item D.
Okay, motion to approve, uh, to, uh, to elect a mayor pro temp of the city of Easther.
All right, you, you guys remember how this goes? So if there's a motion, um, it's basically a nomination, but if there's a motion for someone, if it passes, they're the mayor pro temp. If it doesn't pass, then we can accept the, the other motions for other votes. I think that's how it goes. Do we have a motion, uh, for anyone to be elected mayor pro temp?
I have a.
Oh, no, no, that's.
Richardson.
Okay, Councilwoman Richardson, okay.
Yes, I did have a motion, I would like to nominate Kim Howard as mayor pro temp. Kim Howard.
Kim Howard.
Hey, can we give a nominee for the floor?
No. No.
The motion is to nominate Kim Howard, mayor pro temp, do we have a second? Okay, motion dies. Do we have another motion?
I have a motion to, um, nominate, uh, Stephen Chisholm for mayor pro temp.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's probably moved, it's been properly moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, den. It passes. Congratulations, mayor pro temp, Chisholm. That means we can, whenever I'm not here, he will run the meeting. Whenever we need coffee or food, he goes to town. That's how that goes. All right, we go to my favorite part of the meeting, public participation. All right, do we have an extra mic for the public to hand the folks, or they can have my mic? All right. Do we have anybody have any public comments, limited to three minutes, please? Mr. Henderson. No papers in action, if you have a card, you can just come over.
All right. Hello, family, how y'all folks doing? Got a chance to tell, tell a joke, no, I ain't gonna tell a joke. No, no, what I'm gonna say, I, I'm Gabe Henderson, I work for the Easther, uh, Easther Goodfellas. And, okay, we gonna have our paper drive start in the cooler sometime, part of the year, December the first and second, that's a Friday, December the first and second. So we gonna be out there, and hope you can get as much help, and the best help y'all can give us, if y'all see us out there, shh, shivering, and, you know, and, and cold and all that, hey, donate, and we gonna be selling our papers, help us along. We trying to do as much and the best we can to help make sure as many children out sitting in Easther have a beautiful Christmas. So I'm gonna be out there, many of us, we gonna be out there, so help us along. I love y'all, I ain't got more, no more to say. Got thirty seconds for a Friday and Saturday, and then we might do the following week, so we, you okay, and thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Mr. Henderson.
Yeah.
Did you all have the opportunity to reach out to all of our, our council colleagues?
True, and what, what, what?
For the Goodfellas paper, for ads?
Well, and I think we did.
I just wanted to make sure it was an equal.
I guess.
Thank you, residents.
Love y'all.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council, and to this, to the residents of this great city of Easther. My name is Latoya Trippla, and I just wanna speak to you all briefly about our Code Red Alert System. I know some of you have heard me speaking about this, some of you maybe you haven't, but I'm just gonna read this top page because it's, it's very important. Um, what is Code Red, some of you will probably ask. Code Red is an emergency notification system that is used to deliver mass communication to the general public by email, text, or phone calls. And you get important information like road closures, bold border alerts, or street, uh, repairs that are being done, and right now, we're coming to our winter month, so when the, when you, when we need to, uh, plow our streets, you can get an alert that you need to move your cars off the street, street sweeping, all of that stuff, which is very important to all of us, and a lot of us sometimes call and say, well, I didn't get a notice that my water was being cut off, or I didn't get a notice about this. So we're asking all of the citizens of Easther, I have some of these panelists back there at my seat, you can see me after this meeting, it tells you how you can go about signing up to be able to get these alerts, okay? So we want everybody, everybody in this city, tell your family members, tell your cousins, if you own a business, tell all the business owners, tell everybody in this city to sign up for this, cuz it's very important. Okay?
Okay.
Okay? So see me at the end of this, uh, meeting, and I'll give you this, and if we have anybody that's not tech savvy, you can come to our office at two six nine zero zero Preston Street, if, we have our phone number at the back, and we will actually help you, walk you through the process, we will sign you up. Just be patient with us, and we will be patient with you, and we will get you signed up right there on the spot, okay? All right, thank you. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Mr. King.
Good evening, for those who don't know me, my name is Sandra King, I am the community liaison for American International Academy here in Easther. Uh, congratulations to those who were elected and re-elected. Um, I want you to know that we are still here, the little three schools that occupy Easther, we're asking that not only does the city come out and support us in what we're doing, we want the city council and mayor to support us as well. We have invested money into the city, into our school districts, so that our kids do not have to go outside of our city to be educated. We are here to, to support all initiatives and actions, we didn't get a call for an ad for your paper.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so is it still time?
I, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, next, next time you wanna be in that paper, so that we can, anything that the city is doing, American International Academy is here for. Uh, we're gonna find out about this, the family that was, uh, homeless, we're gonna see what we can do to help them as well. We're not just a school that's here to occupy, we're here to be a part of the city of Easther. Uh, our superintendent, our school leaders are very invested into the school district, into the city, and we want our babies to be educated.
Amen.
In our city.
All right.
Now, if we should have this old school system, we still gonna be here. But we look forward to that day as well. God bless you.
Anybody else, public comment? Please show.
To mayor and council, my name is Jesse Shelby. On behalf of us citizens of Easther, welcome. And we look forward to all of you doing great work for us. Thank you, and we look forward to you the rest of the four years.
Amen.
Anybody else, going once, going twice? Okay. We have, next, we have comments from the city clerk, Michael Secrets, who's affiliated with our city clerk, of course, we just wanna thank him for coming. He's busy workers. Uh, city treasurer, do you have any comments? No, no comments. He, he says we have a whole bunch of money, we have no problem. Everything is great. Mayor and council communication, who would like to start this? We're going by oldest first? I didn't even say a name.
And I'm honored. Yes, um, I'll take that. Will you pull some mic? Okay, thank you. So I'm the most seasoned.
Okay, thank you. Um, I wanna thank the citizens for allowing me another chance to serve the city council. I'm deeply honored. Um, don't take it granted, for granted, um, I'm here to serve, that's, that's all I'm about. Um, but I have to thank, uh, the people that have supported me, you know who you are. And I do have to give a special, loving shout out to my foot soldier, James Richardson. Um, I wasn't trying to get back here, but he said, honey, be needed. Sees have good ideas too, they can still work. And he pushed, and he worked, and he's been doing that for fifty-one years. And I want to thank you. Uh, I also want to thank the police officers, well, for helping the homeless family. Um, I was the one that called, they were in the alley beside my house, and I just saw little children playing in the fire. So I called the police, and we walked down there and found this family homeless. And I'm honored that one responded to the call, thanked the police. Cuz I know we're just kinda short, but also, yeah, I was saddened to see, uh, and talk to them that they got evicted from the hotel across the street. We have to do something to help, I guess. We have to do something to help our residents, and maybe a team of us can get together and try to work something out to help our people. I don't know if some of these hotels have Section 8 or what we can do to keep them off the street, but it's definitely too cold for our citizens to be out on the street and with the children. So if anyone has any ideas, I'm open, willing to work, so we can do some positive things here, and we have to start at home with us. Care and watch it out for each other. The bickering and fighting. Cut it. Life's too short. It is, it's just too short. And so I find it an honor to be here with these young people. Football players. And that's all I have. I'm the second oldest, okay. I'd just like to thank all of my residents who supported me in this journey. This is my fifth term. Seeing you all, you guys, the most supporters I have, I'm very humbled for that, and I just want to tell you guys, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to thank the residents, for the city of Inglewood, for helping me to get here. I look forward to working with this administration. I look forward to working with the council. And like Councilwoman Richardson said, I'm telling you, I was a three-man team. I had my husband and my best friend. We walked these streets. Baby, I love you, thank you so much for all of this.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to also say thank you to you all. First of all, thank you for the positive energy that we have in this room, and we continue to look forward to this. We all know sitting up here, there's going to be some disagreements amongst us, but all that we can do to put out the best representation is to be receptive to one another and accept what is before us and be definitive on how we vote and make sure we're able to articulate our stance to the community or be that voice from our district, so that when we're up here voting, they know we're standing up for them. I look forward to serving with all of you. Welcome to the team, welcome back to those who were here with me before. We've had our trials and tribulations, and we're going to continue moving forward. And I want to last but not least encourage each and every one of you to try to find your niche, because we have a plethora of boards and commissions that need able bodies with thinking minds, which are all of us in this community, to get on board to help us move forward. Sometimes we look at these boards and commissions and say, y'all just recycling the same people, but we don't have enough stepping up to the plate that wants to do the work that needs to be done. You're civic duty. So please, 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 appeal to you to visit the clerk's office, fill out that application, submit it, and get ready to roll up your sleeves, put on your boots, and get down in the mud with us as we build up this foundation of Inglewood that we stand on. Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank my family and friends for supporting me, more importantly, the residents of Inglewood, who are allowing me this opportunity to represent and stand up for you guys. I feel like Jesus, it takes all of us, so I'm excited to see so many people in this room here tonight. I hope it continues, because it's going to take all of us to turn Inglewood around and move the city into a positive direction. And I'm just honored and I'm humbled to become part of this body. I look forward to learning from all of you, to working with you, the residents, and working together just to improve our city. God bless.
I'll keep going brief. I just want to say thank you to the community of Inglewood. It originally started with my family kind of lifting me up, and now I feel like I've created a plethora of new family members, new friends, and I thank you all for just kind of putting your arms around me and kind of lifting me up through this process. It's a journey. It's my first time, but I haven't been received with any negative feedback, so I want to say I appreciate you all and definitely encourage me to keep going, and I hear everything that you all say and telling me I'm taking it in, and hopefully I can make the city of Inglewood proud.
Glad this came in to come this last. Pastor Williams is going to kill me if I don't make this announcement. We are having an Inglewood Public School debt burning celebration. Everybody's welcome to come out. Senator Dana Loehnke is going to do a ceremony, because now all the Inglewood school debt has been paid off. Monday, February 27th, at 1:00 P.M.
Where?
You know where. Go to high school, go around. Inglewood High School, round. So please come. 1:00 P.M. I'd like to say I'm very, very excited about working with this council. We have seasoned folks, we have young folks, you know we needed some new blood in here. And we got people I didn't meet in Go, in Cal, in Go. But I just want to let you know, last four years have been productive. Got a chance to recalibrate, get my mind together, got my energy right. Sometimes things that happen that are negative turn out to be blessings.
That's right.
And you have to accept that and take on that challenge. I'm looking forward, looking forward to some of the great things that we're going to do. Yes, we have work to do, but we smile, because we're going to get it done. And now I have seasoned folks, young folks to help get it done. I can't wait to run out there. We have to walk out of this room, I said this last week, unified as a city. The election is over. I know how it feels to lose, it's not a good feeling. Been there, done that. And I know how it feels to win, but we all have to win. In order for us to win, all of us have to participate and be on the same page. So I know people, everything's just still a little raw right now, you know? Election was just recently. Over the months, we have to reel everybody in, even the people who are not happy about some of us or me sitting up here. We have to reel them back in, because we need all of us to make it happen. It's us against everybody. Nobody else is rooting for us. Some folks are laughing at us. We're not going to stand for that. So we're going to do great things. Holidays are coming up, I'm going to fry me some turkeys. We're going to enjoy ourselves, socialize, and get the work done. So I'm looking forward to 2024, it's going to be a great year, and I can't wait. I'm glad you guys came out. Next meeting will be at the normal place, of course, and we'll start getting some business done, because we have much, much, much to do. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, turkeys! We're giving away turkeys tomorrow here at 5:30. So if you know anybody who needs a turkey for Thanksgiving, let them know. We'll be at 5:30 until they run out. All right? One for family, one for a car, you can just drive it up or throw it in the car and drive it off, okay? And whatever happens, when we run out of turkeys, it's Steve Chisholm's fault.
Yes. The Goodfellas are taking it till Friday.
Okay, Goodfellas, Goodfellas, you can still put your ad in. Till Friday, Mr. King. Mr. Henderson, make sure you talk to Mr. King before you leave tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, it's been moved? Been seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
We do adjourn.